Good evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Lorraine, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Ms. Diglio?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Schlaffer? Mayor LaFois.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 4th, 2019. We are expecting Councilman Schlaffer, but he said he's running a little bit late, so we had to get started. Up now are the approval of minutes for February 9th, 2019 budget meeting and February 25th, 2019 regular meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of February 9th and February 25th.
I will second that.
A motion by Councilwoman Diglio, seconded by Councilwoman Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes, I'm staying on the 25th. Okay, at this point in the meeting, the Town Council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anybody who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. And, Councilman Schlaffer, it is 7 of 3. Councilman Schlaffer is present. Anybody, please state your name and address.
Ralph, 12th Avenue. Beginning to sound like we're breaking record here. No shoveling in this town is pathetic, and nobody's doing anything about it. Woodside Inn, Sparta Avenue, it is a cross marked thing with the metering there. You have to push buttons across the street, and it wasn't shoveled until Thursday after I made the complaint again. I've been complaining that is that incident for four freaking years, and nobody does a damn thing about it. It's not acceptable. How many cops go by there every day on patrol? How about the road department going by there every day? Nobody does a damn thing. It's not right. I can't drive in this town. I have to walk. There's no safe way to cross that street. How many times do I have to complain? I emailed you a picture. Also, Mayor LaFois and Tom, this time. It takes me to complain again till it gets done. Is that right? I'm asking you, is that right?
I'm not going to answer right now.
You're not going to answer?
Not at this moment.
Okay. There are so many things that have to be done. And, Tom, you're the head man. You take the -- you're in charge of the whole thing. Let's get this straightened out, please. For four years, it's not right.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tracy Paparella, 56 Halsted Street. I'm a resident, and also, you know, I'm the president of the Newton Swim Team. I'm not here on behalf of the swim team, but as a taxpayer. Again, it's about the pool. The New Jersey Herald posted or published an article in February following Mr. Russo's letter. In the article, the manager is quoted as saying, "The pool has lost between $10,000 and $40,000 per year over the last few years." I have an issue with the word "lost." We've lost money. It makes it sound like you think the pool should be a moneymaker, words that were actually used at your budget meeting. But we're not Tom of Hope League, we're not a country club, the pool is never meant to make money. It's an amenity for the people in this town and a cement that we can afford. In last month's letter to the Friends of the Newton Pool, the town manager says the town has spent $1.5 million in the past decade on the pool facility. But what he doesn't say is more than a million of that was not for maintenance or repairs. It was money the town decided to spend in a capital improvement project to renovate the pool in 2005 and 2006. By closing the pool, the town is flushing more than $1 million down the drain. What's more, the pool is not nearly as costly as the council seems to want us to think. As a matter of fact, the pool generates revenue, collecting more than $60,000 each summer from people enjoying the pool, memberships, daily classes, swim lessons, concessions, and the swim team. This revenue doesn't appear to be anywhere in the town budget reports, although there are line items for other types of revenue. Money collected from the Newton Pool, more than $60,000 a year, is not listed. Budget reports first reveal a budget amount for pool-related salaries and other expenses, including maintenance, the actual cost each year, the proposed budget for the following year. There is no record of any collected revenue which would directly offset the expenses, which do directly offset the expenses, in turn reducing the amount of budgeted tax dollars needed for the operation of the pool. Even the council can add up all that unspent pool budget money and fix the pool this summer. A Kelly audit in 2017 shows an actual expense, salaries and maintenance, of $67,453. Your records used at the budget meeting show a revenue of $62,945 that year. So in actuality, the pool was used, excuse me, the pool used less than $4,500 in taxpayer money in 2017. Additionally, at the final council meeting in 2017, there was an appropriations transfer from the pool budget to the vehicle maintenance budget for almost $15,000. The pool is losing money every year. How is it that it had $15,000 to transfer to another town expense at the end of the Two documents used at the budget meeting on February 9th, a copy of the 2018 budget and proposed 2019 budget, and a summary of pool revenue and expenses, show an increase of $17,000 in operating expenses in 2018. Council was told that the pool had lost 100,000 gallons of water in three weeks last summer. The loss of water and the money should have been an indication that something needed to be repaired last summer. It sounds like the hydrostatic valve in the main drain was broken last summer. That's in the letter. That's part of your $250,000 estimate that we haven't seen. As a homeowner, if my operating expenses nearly doubled, I'd be right on top of it. I wouldn't wait six months to get a study. But the lost water and the nearly double increase in operating expenses surely caused someone, surely would cause someone concern. So I ask, why didn't anyone get an expert out here last summer? On January 7th of this year, I received an email from the former pool supervisor on behalf of, as president of the swim team, that I would be working with her replacement this season. On the same day, your new pool supervisor made calls to outsource the management of the pool for the summer. A month later, you voted to close the pool. I don't understand the timing of all this. If in fact the pool was in such dark condition to warrant its closure on February 9th, why try to hire someone a month earlier to manage the pool this summer? At the February budget meeting, there was a lot of talk of Band-Aids fixing the pool over the years, although over the last three years, there has been no discussion of any problems with the pool at any council or rec committee meeting. At the last council meeting, we were told you have pictures of the pool from last spring, summer, and this winter. When will these in your $250,000 estimate be made public on your website?
Ms. Paparella, it's time.
The town would like to see the data.
That's time.
Can I finish my sentence?
Sure.
The town would like to see the data on which you base your decision to close the pool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Hertis, 22 Grand Ave. Just wanted to add my voice to what's already just been said very eloquently, and I have all the data and figures that this lady has. Just speaking as a resident and a grandparent, I've spent the past three years bringing my five grandchildren to the pool every summer, helping them learn how to swim, really enjoying this opportunity that the town provides, you know, as taxpayers, to help support. I think it'd be a real shame to lose that, and as I said, I don't have the facts and figures, but I think that it's an important thing to think about as a council person to really put some serious threat to closing the pool, because it has a real impact on the lives of the residents in this town. I look forward to it every year, as do my grandchildren. So I hope that you can come up with a way to keep the pool operational. It's really one of the best perks, if you will, from living in town. And also, I'd just like to say, if we do manage to keep it open, which I hope we do, that you do away with that reserved parking, because I was just, it's real detrimental for me, someone who's a little bit older and not great as a she, to be dragging myself and my grandkids up that long walk to get to the pool and passing by the cars of all these very young and healthy and in shape lifeguards that get preferential parking. I just, I couldn't understand what, how that decision was made in it. It was actually a deterrent about a few nights this summer for me going. So let's work together to try and figure out how to keep this pool open and get that parking the way it should be. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is this my stream? I'm sorry. Is this being my stream?
It's being videotaped.
My name is Bill Prester, live at 15 Main Avenue of the New Jersey, and it's about the pool. I've read you all the prepared statements. Sorry, I forgot the email. That is what's coming. Two quick things. The first thing was, when I saw the price tag on the engineering study I just done, it had to be outrageously high. I'm a former member of the Acquisition Corps at Picatinny Hospital for 30 years, and I know government things can be a bit expensive there, but it just seemed excessively high. I'm not sure, was that a competitive bid in which there was specifics with timelines? Or was it a sole source in which the engineering study was done? Does anyone have that answer? Hello?
Not at this time. We're going to wait until all public comments have been made, and then we'll address the comments.
Thank you. Okay, the second thing is, I'm also a former fire chief down at Picatinny Hospital, and obvious when I see something that looks like a fire truck, I try to put it out. In order to do so, I don't want to complain without coming up with what I consider a potential solution. My thing is, as the Town Council, taking a look at the possibility of privatizing or outsourcing the management of the pool function, okay? I'm not going to go into it in detail. Basically, what I would see is potentially you run a two-year contract, reviewable annually, you have Department of Code Enforcement here to make sure that all statutes are taken care of, you know, lifeguard that they're probably training the whole bit. Leave it on that contract until it, there'll be money coming in. There aren't any kind of issues where someone gets hurt or whatever, it goes through the contract and not to the town. I don't know if that was a problem in the past, but, you know, there is something to be said about outsourcing or downsizing or outsourcing. So I'll just briefly put it on my comments here, and I just thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
My name is Anthony Nygro. I live at Tungtun Grand Avenue. I want to talk about my road being paved. It hasn't been paved since 38 years, and it's a wreck. I like to drive in New York City, it's smoother. And they bring up, all they do is patch it up, they come out the plows, and ruin it again. The holes, the coker sac, it's terrible, you know? When are you guys going to fix it? They told me for the last three years, it's on the list. Then after that, it's not in the budget. We don't have the money. So I think, you know, and they said, they were expecting for that company to be sold down the street, and they would pay for it. I pay my taxes, so that, I think that, you know, everybody in that block pays taxes. I think this road should be fixed by now, the pipes and everything. I get brown water, my hot water heater went full water, my toilet, every two days, I gotta clean it, it's brown water. You know, you don't see it too clear, but the sentiment, that's what we're getting. So I think that, you know, the guys should really fix this road by now. Every other street's being fixed, you know, Spring Street, well-taken curve, every other. Coker sacs, my guy told me it wasn't a through street. I said, so what? I pay my taxes, I go up and down that street. And people really come up and down that street, they think it's a turnaround, they think they can get through it. But still, it's all, it's about time to pave it. It's so old, it's crazy. We had two water main breaks so far, or I think it was two or more, you know? It's going to fail. You know it's going to fail, and you're going to have a bigger problem. So I appreciate, you know, it's about time to pave it.
Can you repeat the street name again?
Grand Ave.
Excuse me? Grand Ave. Okay.
Felicia Carson, 4on Street. At the February budget meeting, there was a HAWK meeting to replace 802 for 750 next year. The town manager has said pool repairs are a third of a fire truck. Is the repair of the pool being outweighed by a new fire truck? Does 802 get replaced at the expense of the only summer recreation in this town? A new firehouse costing taxpayers $2.2 million gets built, $250,000 gets saved for new fire truck, and the pool gets closed. I'm not trying to say that we don't need fire safety to protect the citizens, but we need to balance. In last year's budget, there was a little over $87,000 budgeted for the pool. It all sounds like a lot of money, but we know that it is reduced by more than $60,000 each year. Let's look at what we budgeted for playgrounds, $84,000 this year. Do we collect revenue from the playgrounds? Are we going to close all of them too? Does the council have all necessary data to justify the closing of the pool this summer? If so, please make it public. Please consider this as you consider the effect the pool closure will have on this town and taxpayers, the children of this town. These kids have nothing. Newton has nothing for our children. It's a safe place for them to go. 20 years from now, you will be more disappointed by the things that you didn't do than by the ones you did do. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else coming forward, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Moving on to council and manager reports. I don't have anything at this time, so, Councilwoman Diglio?
Yes, last Thursday, I attended the Chamber Awards Center, as well as the tribute to Nancy Woods, who was the chamber director for 12 years. It was very well done, and there's not much else I can say, but then it was a very pleasant affair, and I'm looking forward to more in the future.
Yeah, I was there as well, and it was very nice for her. A nice tribute to a hardworking person. Councilman Schlaffer?
Not much for me. I did go to a guys' night out at Mary Magdalene's school just the other day with my son, Bodie, and it was a really, really good time. I hope to see more stuff like that for us to do coming up.
Cool. Mr. Dixon?
On February 26th, I attended a Board of Ed meeting. It started at 6:00 PM with a Torah Paul Sted with the meeting to follow. We were able to see where the nurses' office is going to be moved from the upstairs down to the main level, which is beneficial since there's no elevator. They're also adding a handicap bathroom there. Unfortunately, it results in losing some library space. They're also building a vestibule at the front of the building that's going to feed into the main office as part of their security upgrades. Staff there, students, everybody does a really good job considering the age of the building, making great use of what they have. Also, a representative from the Wallkill River Watershed came to present an opportunity about rain garden being installed at Halsted.
The venue?
No, no, it was Christine Rogers from the Wallkill River Watershed. And it's going to be no cost to the district. Funding is already in place through grants, and they're hoping to also seek additional grant money for the other schools. Dr. Green presented an overview of the some early budget numbers, which they're going to be presented tomorrow night's meeting. Everybody's encouraged to attend and hear what they have to say. Of note, there's a revenue drop of over $310,000 due to a decrease in students from Andover and Green, even though Newton during the same five-year period has seen an increase. There is a deficit that the Board of Ed is going to have to address, and some decisions will have to be made. Newton has been advocating to restart the tri-district consortium, and both Andover and Green have agreed, so that's good. They'll move forward with some shared service opportunities. The Board of Ed did pass a resolution in opposition to Senate Bill 2606 and Assembly Bill 4352, which will be setting caps on employee contributions and health benefits for public employees. Passing through the bill will eliminate over $500,000 in savings for the Newton Board of Ed. Just maybe we could also review those bills and consider maybe a resolution in support of Board of Ed. Two donations were accepted, one from Thor Labs, sorry, one for $50,000 for mental health and behavioral services in the Newton Public Schools, and one for $10,000 to the Newton High School wrestling program. So Thor Labs continues to be a good neighbor. Congratulations to the Newton High School Academic Bowl team who won in the county final. Congratulations to the Newton High School girls' basketball team who made it to the sectional final. They really had a fantastic season. And finally, a lot has been in the news recently about the overrated districts being upset about state funding, losing some of their money that they're not really entitled to because they don't have, they seem declining enrollments. Some legislators have come out and politically been motivated to come out against the redistribution, despite the fact that underrated districts and some of their taxpayers will see benefits. I'm happy to report that Newton will be one of those underrated districts that will receive benefits from S2, with a year to increase of over $600,000. That's all I have.
Thank you. That was very thorough. I, before passing it along to Mr. Russo, want to say that on Thursday, March 21st, at the Mohawk House, there is a Legale Municipalities meeting for anyone up here who would like to attend on the legalization of marijuana. There's going to be a panel discussion. There's going to be some key speakers there. So there's been some movement on that, so if anybody wants further information on that state legislation that will have effect in our communities, you guys, I encourage you to attend. I'm unable to attend due to some personal commitments. Mr. Russo?
Sure. I know at the last meeting, I had unfortunately a wake for a family member that passed. There was a question about street signs and replacement, and DPW had advised that certain poles are missing, and they'll be replaced once the snow melts and the ground is not frozen. So I think there was a question at the last meeting without particular location. As far as Mr. Porter, he's correct about the snow removal being an issue at that corner. Unfortunately, you know, we rely on the property owners to remove snow, it's their responsibility within the 12 hours of daylight after the storm. Unfortunately, that property seems to be a perpetual offender, so we're going to have to be more aggressive, unfortunately. But Mr. Porter is correct about that corner being an issue, so going forward, if there's an issue, the Public Works will have to remedy the situation, and charges will have to be tracked and charged against the property owner through municipal court. So that's the unfortunate answer to that dilemma since the property owner doesn't seem willing to do it themselves. As far as Ms. Paparella at the pool, she should have received the pictures. Once again, I wasn't at the last meeting, but Lorraine, if you could facilitate Tracy receiving the pictures that Michelle has, I had asked Terry to do that, but I'm not sure if that fell through the cracks, so if you could just follow up to me more for me on that. Mr. Prester, the engineering costs are market rate for this type of service, and it was done via resolution by the council. It's a professional service, so it did not need any type of competitive contracting or bidding. As far as privatizing the pool, that would something the council would have to determine after the study and review are completed. Mr. Nygro, I will talk to Mr. Pellot about Grand Avenue and see where we can get that bumped up in queue, and that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So as far as the proactive stance on the snow removal, I'm sure that there's some frequent flyers around town. Can we like, I mean, you could almost have like Code Enforcement have like a draft letter pretty, I mean, I don't even know if it's going to be a letter. I mean, do we just go right to the objective of clearing the snow to make it passable and safe for the public, or do we have to?
No, the code provides that a complaint goes to the police department, it's 266 is the chapter, and then the police, and then the chief assigns an officer to issue a notice or summons if the snow is not removed within 12 hours of daylight after the storm. But what's happening is, you know, there are properties that are frequent flyers, and they're not taking the responsibility seriously. So then what happens is, I have to direct the Public Works Department to remove the snow, so that means our guys will be doing the work, and then if they're required to do the work by me, we have to track it, we have to charge the property owner pursuant to 266-3, which allows charges to go through either municipal court or lien, once approved by the council, and this was something that Ursula had discussed with the staff. So I think the first line of defense would be going through municipal court. It's an unfortunate process, but they do have up to 12 hours to remove the snow. If not, then it becomes a police matter.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Because there are quite a few people in this town that have SWAT going to their homes to do the snow, and I happen to have a neighbor across the street who's 92 years old. It took a week for SWAT to show up to clear the snow. So I think we need to find out why SWAT is taking so long to come and clean when we only have 12 hours of daylight to do that.
Yeah, separate issue, but you can look into that.
I want to make a note here for the record that we have a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month in April of 2019, just noted for the record. Do we have any, shall we?
We'll move to the second reading.
We'll go on to the ordinance, the second reading of Ordinance 2019-2. An ordinance to exceed the 2019 municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Do I have a motion to open the hearing to the public?
I'll make a motion to open the hearing, but public?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Diglio. All in favor?
Aye.
We are open to the public on that. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll entertain a motion to close that portion of the hearing.
I will make a motion to close that portion of the meeting to the public.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilwoman Diglio, seconded by Councilwoman Dixon. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to act on Ordinance 2019-2?
I will make a motion to act on Ordinance 2019-2.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilwoman Diglio, seconded by Councilwoman Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlaffer?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Town Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
I would like to, Resolution 8620-19, you moved, so we can have a discussion on it.
Okay, 8619-H20. Tom, do you want to go through those, and then we'll discuss 86 separately?
78 is Credits to Water Sewer Account, 79 is the Strategic Plan for the School linesman. Resolution 80 is the Award for Disclosure Contract for Convergitech, 80 on bills and vouchers. 82 is purchase of roads, salt, and snowburt. 83 is a refund, as well as 84, Deputy Public Defender is Resolution 85. 83 is a refund, as well as 84, Deputy Public Defender is Resolution 85. 86 will be separate discussion. Ursula, can you facilitate that? 87, credits due for 196 spring, or give for Chelvis Cleaning for cleaning services is Resolution 88.
Okay. Do you want to talk about, want to run through the consent agenda? We'll talk about that one separately. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda minus Resolution 186?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda minus 86.
I'll second that.
Second by council, or, motion by Councilwoman Diglio, second by Councilman Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Okay. So Resolution 86, I as well had a question on it, so why don't you start, Sandy?
Okay. I was concerned because that is a county road, and what I want to know is why we were contributing to put the beacon there, and where exactly is the crosswalk going to be located? Is it going to be right on Newton-Swordswood Road, or is it going to be on 519?
This is something the chief had worked on along with the county, County Department, and so this is for the warning beacon, and this is the county's proposal to allow for up to the $10,000 will be reimbursed by the town, and that's something they're doing uniformly. And so what it'll provide is in the future, they will take care of maintenance and operations of the warning system itself, the beacon, and then will be responsible for the curb ramps, similar to what we had just done for the crosswalks. So it's a shared services agreement, and that's what it provides for.
Is it across 519, which is Mill Street, or is it across, I forget the numerical designation, Newton-Swordswood?
I don't map it. It says crossing County Route 519 slash Mill Street at mile post 6503. So it's on 519 Mill Street.
And we crossed it.
I can find it.
Oh, the firehouse. Not even, not even, by the firehouse?
No.
So it's a mid-block crossing?
Mid-block crossing, 519, also known as Mill Street, at mile post 6503.
All right. The geography was substantially off. I guess that wasn't, we were assuming it was by the college. So what was it, so is that area of Mill Street the jurisdiction of the town? Or, you know, because Spring Street, in a portion of it, is a county road, but it's the jurisdiction of the town. Is this the same, is this the same scenario?
It's not. It's County Route 519, but it's the provision that the town and the county will have a shared services agreement for this pedestrian warning beacon that we've been asked after for a while, and it's something that the county's doing uniformly, that both the municipality and the county will contribute to have that.
Yeah, I've been hearing it for years. I mean, is this like the, this is the negotiated settlement? I mean, it would be nice that like?
This is what they're doing for all the municipalities, yes. It's not unique to the town.
It's not unique to the town. This is their?
As far as the cost, correct.
You guys have comments on this? I mean, we shoulder a significant burden of, of county operations as well here in the town of Newton. I mean, that's my, that's my gripe. It's a county road. The citizens are of the town of Newton, but the road is owned by the county, plowed by the county, paved by the county.
It's a county road within the town of Newton, so I think that's the purpose of the shared services agreement and allowing for a split with the cost and the maintenance, not only of the beacon, but of the curb and all the related appliances.
So the county plows it?
Yes.
So the county plows it, knocks out the apron there, and then we have to fix it.
The county's responsible for the maintenance and operations of?
Of the beacon itself?
And associated crosswalk markings and traffic signs. So that's all on the county, according to this agreement.
Essentially, we provide traffic. I understand that. You know, we're, we're here, they don't have a police department. We can provide traffic. They saw that's in there. We buy the material and remove the snow.
Well, not responsible for snow and ice, no.
Thought it was on the sidewalk.
We're responsible for curb ramp. We're responsible for the curb ramps, responsible for up to $10,000 of the cost.
That's the problem I have, since we pay county taxes already. I find, I just don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of Newton that we should have to pay additional monies when we're already paying county taxes, road maintenance, and for those things. And the county pays us nothing for all the buildings that they have in this town that they're tax exempt. They pay us nothing. I don't know why we have to pay them. It kind of bothers me a great deal that our taxpayers are kind of double paying because now we're paying out of our town taxes, and we're paying out of our county taxes for a service that we shouldn't have to be paying for, as far as I'm concerned.
If you could table this to the next meeting, we're going to double check. There might be a grant that's in play as well. Don't worry, we'll check that for you for the next meeting.
This has been, this has been, now, now, you know, I'm recollecting. This has been going on for several years with former planner at the county who has been advocating for this. There was some, supposed to be some, there's supposed to be some off-track development contributions, I thought, from a developer there. That's not, that's, that's not the case anymore?
I don't know anything about that.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm advocating to table this for further research. Wait till there's a full council here.
And more information. I make a motion to table Resolution 8620-19 for further information.
I'll second that for the next meeting.
Motion, motion to council, to table Resolution 86-2019 until the next meeting. Motion was made by Councilwoman Diglio, seconded by Councilman Dixon. Roll call vote.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Next up on the agenda, we have the introduction of the 2019 budget, which is Resolution 89-2019. This is the municipal budget and the water and sewer budget. We've had two public hearings on this. A lot of work has been done by the staff. It's a very solid budget, and there's going to be more information coming out about that. We're looking to, little to no tax increase at all on the municipal side of the budget. Our fund balance is stronger than it's ever been before. The, you know, some items of the, the budget have made this possible. There's been some diligent planning by our CFO and our manager, so I just want to point out that, you know, upon the introduction, that this is looking like a very positive budget for the town.
I have a couple things to read into the record for introduction.
Please.
All right. So it's Resolution 892019, it's the municipal budget of the town of Newton, County of Sussex for fiscal year 2019. Be a result of the following statements of revenues and appropriations that constitute the municipal budget for the year 2019. Be a further result that said budget be published in the New Jersey Herald in the issue of March 22, 2019. Governing body, the town of Newton, does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year 2019. For our purposes, approved means introduced. Notice hereby given that the budget and tax resolution was approved by the council of the town of Newton, County of Sussex on March 11th. Hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at the municipal building on April 8, 2019 at 7:00 p.m., at which time a place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons. Total appropriations, current fund, $13,130,000 on Sheet 41. The budget general revenues, $4,289,312. Local tax, $8,840,688. Water sewer utility, Sheet 31, total budget, $4,525,000. And as far as taxes, this budget maintains the same municipal taxes on the average assessed home at $2,731. So for the average assessed home at $185,000, there's no tax increase. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion to introduce 89-2019.
And I will second that motion.
A motion by Councilman Dixon, seconded by Councilwoman Diglio. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Okay, so there's going to be no intermission. Moving on to discussion, I feel it prudent that if we're going to discuss the pool, that if you, if anybody up here would like to discuss pool issues, now's the time, or any other issues at all.
I still think that it is in our best interest for due diligence to perform the full engineer's review before making any decisions. And that is, like I said last meeting, based on conversations I had with other towns who have similar pools of age and structure. It is just the best thing to do, make sure that our investment is viable. But I also want everyone in the room who has frustrations towards the closing to start thinking towards the event that I had mentioned at the last meeting, the Save the Pool event. We don't know when or if it will happen, but to get excited and try to get people interested and potentially, you know, sending us ideas of things or events that we can have, vendors, things that we can have for the children to do, but something for us to look forward to the reopening of the pool if it does remain closed, and in the meantime, start generating some excitement about it.
Me personally, the decision to properly fix the pool and save the pool for the 2020 season, you know, comes, you know, at a little bit of a precipice for me because I was, I know, I grew up on a swim team. I grew up in a lake. I know what it's like to need and want to have a recreation space. However, you know, us being, we're dubbed with spending the public's money wisely, and the last repair at the pool was not spent wisely, and it was done as a patch repair to a more significant structural problem that we're experiencing. The pool can't be just patched. It's got undulating concrete, it's got voids, there's, there's spaces between the backfill and the concrete. The, the reason they can't remain filled in the winter is because there's a valve leaking, which would require significant repairs to, to, to replace it. And it just needs to be done thoroughly, effectively, go out to bid, select the right bidder, because there's, you know, we've had bidding problems with pool contractors in the past, which is one of the reasons how we got to this point. So it's not an easy decision, but it's the right decision. It's one season, and it's, it's unsafe to, there's abrasions all over the pool, the, the plaster's coming off. There was cones in the pool last summer to keep people from stepping in certain areas of, of the concrete that was, that was fraying. And, you know, we're not going to do a $30,000, $40,000 pool plastering, because that's what it costs, to, to just patch it, to have it all crack back off in, in two years. So we just have to do it right. If we do it right, the pool won't close again for, it'll, it'll be open indefinitely for the, for the useful life of its repair. That's, that's my opinion. I mean, I'm sticking by the, it needs to be done right. We need to get a geotech in there, an engineer, and send it out to bid properly and have a contractor repair this properly.
I agree with you. Having a son who happens to specialize in this, unfortunately, he's in Vermont, I did have him review the resolutions, the cost, and he said the cost were pretty much what would be charged for the services that were going to be done. And I'm looking forward to the geo because what a lot of people don't know is that the pool and that whole area is built on a landfill. So we don't know if we're dealing with uplift, or if we're dealing with settlement, or a combination of both. So it's important that we find that out. We also need to know, looking at the old diagrams, the original diagrams, how much gravel was put in under the foundation, well, under the pool as the foundation. And so I'm hoping that having the geo study done, we will have that information, and we can move forward to making all the corrections that need to be made to the pool, so that it will be there for a long time. Right now, I have seen the cracks in the pool. I've been in the pool with it empty, and there are serious cracks. They need to be done, and they need to be repaired correctly. But we won't know that until we have the geo study done. And I believe that is being arranged for.
Anybody else I have to discuss?
No, just filling a couple gaps on, on the pool. We did put $14,000 in the budget for recreation special events, to have some activities for the children for, to do over the summer, some bus trips and some things down at Memory Park. So that is part of the 2019 budget in recognition of the fact that the pool was something important to the, to the residents and visitors, and to have some other things for the children to do this summer. You know, I, I appreciate Tracy's comments. I worked very closely with Tracy last year to make sure the swim team had a very successful season, which they did, and I was very happy about that. But, you know, I'm, I was thinking about this the other day, and some of the readings I've been doing, I came across a quote from Cicero, it said, "I criticize by creation, not by finding fault." So rather than people point fingers, I think what we do is understand the value of the pool. It is an amenity, it's not a necessity, but it's meant a lot to this town for decades. And I know I take that seriously, I know the council takes that seriously, but there's a recognition, like Sandy said, that there's something structural going on with this pool. And, you know, sometimes in life as adults, we have to delay gratification. It's not something that children are very good at, but as adults, we have to sometimes live our life like that. And the $20,000 on the engineering, the $10,000 on the geotech, to me, those are dollars that are an investment. It's not just in the pool. Those are, those are dollars that are being invested in the children and the families of the community, that if we do this correctly, if we find out once and for all what's going on with the pool, then we can properly and intelligently allocate resources to not just fix the pool year over year, which is what we've done. Every year, we've made a decision as a staff and as a town that we've put money into the budget to fix the pool and do Band-Aids, just so the swim team could have a facility, so people could have a place to go for the summer. But when you're looking at a six-figure price tag, when you have $15 million in debt, and you have a town that's a third tax exempt, you have to look at things differently. And I appreciated the comments about the fire truck, but in this business, we have to weigh fire trucks and firehouses against pools and police cars and public works, skid steers, and paving streets. Like, these are all projects competing for dollars. There's not an unlimited amount of tax dollars we have to work with. So I appreciate everybody's comments, because you're not necessarily wrong. The pool is a great thing for the town. It does draw people in. It does bring out the best in our residents and our visitors, but there's a price tag that comes with that. And I think taking a thoughtful, intelligent approach is the right thing to do. It is the direction of the council. It is what I will implement and institute correctly. We are looking at firms for the, for the geotechnical component. Sandy said, we have a couple recommendations from suburban and one from our architect. So I think we should all be looking at this and be on the same page and on the same team. It shouldn't be residents against the council and the manager and implications that things weren't done correctly. The pool is a 60-year-old structure that needs a little TLC, and I think if we all work together with, you know, Tracy's knowledge on what's gone on in the years past, Sandy's knowledge, Deb Danielson, who was the rec supervisor, and Michelle just coming on board, but kind of looking at it from a different perspective, a new engineering firm, a separate firm to do the geotech, I think if we put our best foot forward and our best minds forward, we can come up with solutions that will make the pool something that could be viable for another 50 or 60 years. And I think ultimately, that should be the goal, is doing things the right way, managing the resources we have financially correctly, and respecting the fact that we're spending other people's money, that these are tax dollars, and we have to be respectful of that. So, that's it.
Thank you, Tom. You know, the one thing I'd point out as well is that, you know, we, we weren't able to just jump onto a significant repair like this at the end of the pool season because we didn't have capital budgeted, and, you know, an expense like this requires capital and not just operating expenses. So, and that's where we are right now. So at this point, I will open the microphone back up to the public. Anybody has any comments?
I have a couple questions. My name's Melissa Castell, and I live at 16 Wallstead Street for not very much longer, because I'm leaving this town. But before I do, I want to make it very clear a few things. Mr. Russo, who's the one that made all of these decisions in the past about repairing the pool and doing little patches and fixing it this way and doing a shady? the pool and doing little patches and fixing it this way and doing a shady job and, you know, like, okay, well, aren't you supposed to inspect it every year and keep up the maintenance every year? If I don't look at my house and look at the stairs every year and keep track of what's going on with them, things are going to happen and things are going to be catastrophes like this. What, I don't, I need an answer. Who's your boss, Mr. Russo? Who's your boss?
This is the public session, so we're listening to you. We're not fielding questions.
I'll, I'll make sure I find out who he answers to for sure. But I've been doing some connecting outside of Sussex County and made some connections with freestylers, et cetera. And it's very, very interesting. I'm going to save a lot of what I have to say for when we have the big powwow about the pool. I think it's, what is it, the date that you guys had set up to talk about the pool? It was on the internet, April something? I don't know. It was set around the internet and something about April something, there's going to be a big powwow. Anyway, just warning you, or I guess I shouldn't have warned you, but I am. I want to save it till it's livestreamed, which I thought this whole group of you that we elected, this was all about transparency. Where's, where's the livestream? Didn't, wasn't one of the things that, oh, yes, we're going to have it livestreamed every time?
Nobody ever said that.
Excuse me?
It's videotaped and recorded and published. Right now.
And I also want it on record, if that is the case, that, Mr. Russo, there will be no retaliation because I know of many people that you retaliated against. And I want it on the record that I will sue your butts off if there's any retaliation from that man. Because if you look at Spring Street, it's a crappy shithole again. Every store that came here is gone.
Your language is much welcome in this room. Thank you.
That's how freaking pissed off I am. I'm leaving the only home my children know because of this town, these, you people right here. You care nothing about this town, Mr. Russo. You don't, you live in Basking Bridge. And we pay for your freaking car. And we pay for your gasoline. And we pay for your repairs. And we pay you a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year. The county of Morristown County seat, he makes, they make the same amount as you and there's four times as many people that live there. And you can't even get the sidewalks cleared off or get a freaking street sign replaced. Now, the pool's closed because you were incompetent? Oh, but you decided to write yourself a little check for a two thousand dollar bonus this year? Wasn't that nice? I mean, that could have gone to save the pool. The man, the amount that that man is taking advantage of this town, this town should be audited, is what it should be. And I would do everything in my power to find out why, how I can get this town audited. Thank you.
Jeff Harrison, seventeen, Monroe Ave. You guys were talking about a landfill where the pool is on. When they do geotech and they find out it's environmental, it's going to cost a lot more money. Instant. We don't know what they did back in the day. Did they cap it right? You know, the area's settled and it's probably from the landfill. If it's built on top of it. And then, Deputy Mayor Flynn, I agree with you about the county. And we're all talking about solutions for the pool. Why isn't the county, the hospital, somebody doing it? And besides the pool, we need it connected to the community center. So everybody has something. You know, the kids have the advantage of going to the community center in winter, the pool there for the summer, or a year long. The kid donations are at the county. Like, the county lost all of us. I'm sorry. I mean, rules got to take a state eventually. I mean, no disrespect to the county, but we don't get nothing from it. No taxes, nothing, the hospital. I remember that article that was published. I remember the hospital with a read on it, what happened to them. Because I remember it was something a million dollars. Why can't we ask the hospital to donate? You know, put their name on it. Who cares? But at least we can solve the solution, get rid of the pool, get a new one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Porter's call, Pine Street. My solution, not sweeping, but one idea with the pool I brought up, the reason that Tom was not here for a meeting, I think Minister Flynn was here either, but think about closing it in for year-round. Biggest problem with any pool in homeowners or public pools is your extension and contraction for a number of months. You close it in, you get year-round membership too. It'll help, it'll help pay itself off. If you leave that million dollars to build a building, it's expensive, yes, but at the end, I think it would be a win-win all around. Maybe the school board would go in with it also, you know, possibly disapproaching. Number two, with the development on Spring Street coming up soon, I know they're talking about the boulevard building, you know, repaired, you know, torn down and rebuilt. And I know they're working on the building, I've written down the number of, but it's, uh, where the antique shop was, they moved across the street, but they're removing the model and that to upgrade the apartments above. Rather than be short parking spots, they're, we're short ready, we're going to be short more. I think it'd be proactive for us to start charging these developers, maybe, I don't know, five thousand, seven thousand dollars per apartment and put it towards a fund for a future parking lot. We're going to need one sooner or later, a parking tower. We know that. If you don't want to admit it, then, you know, you're looking for, we're going to need a parking structure, you know that. So we should look ahead now before it gets too late. And then, the last thing I was going to say is, I saw that Sweden just replaced a fire engine that's twenty-six years old. Now, I'm not saying I want to keep one that long. How old are our fire engines? I have no idea. But are we getting the full use out of them or are we replacing them too fast? Because we do spend a lot of money on fire trucks and the amount of coal they get is not really all that much.
Believe me, we are going to extend the life of that fire truck as long as possible.
You know what, I don't even know. I thought you were asking about the ages, you know, average age, you know, right now? I don't know. It's curious, you know?
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy Paprell again. I have a few questions. I appreciate you hearing, hearing me out on everything. And Tom, I appreciate what you have said. I'm not here to attack you. I'm not here to find fault. I'm here to find a solution to open the town. From what I have read, things just don't look right. And so I am asking for clarity. Okay? If I am wrong, tell me I'm wrong. Just, just have, have some transparency of, of what is happening. Okay? Tom was kind enough to call me as the president of the swim team before the letter went out. We had a conversation and it must have been, Tom, it must have been five minutes later, you hit the send button because my phone blew up. Everybody saw the letter that I hadn't seen yet, that the pool was closing. So in that time, the, the swim team is surviving. We are operational this summer, even if the Newton Pool is not open. My concern with the Newton Pool closing is that we have seen other pools, every other pool in this county, close and never reopened. Okay? Votec was where all of the high schools practiced. We had Votec in Kidatini. Votec came in with an exorbitant estimate after a study of everything that had to be done. A couple million dollars. They said, "We're not doing it, that we don't have the money." Okay? Sussex wanted, closed. As these pools remain vacant and empty, they deteriorate even further. They're never, ever going to be repaired. I'm afraid if we leave our pool unfilled, not repaired this summer, we're going to be faced with the same thing next year. We're going to, to let that beautiful facility just deteriorate further. The longer that it sits empty out in the weather, the more it will deteriorate. Mr. Flynn, you had mentioned at the budget meeting, you had asked, since when do pools get emptied in the winter? You just stated tonight that the pool has been emptied because of the leak in the valve. However, your own DPW guy at that budget meeting said, well, he asked, since when do we empty the pool? The pool's been emptied for years.
I asked that question.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry. His bad ass. Okay, so the pool's been emptied for years. If the pool's been emptied because of a leaky valve that we are now putting on an estimate, what have we been doing? Why has that valve been, been leaking for years? Or have we just been mistakenly emptying it every winter and allowing the outside freezing land to, to impact the walls of the pool? Right? And you said it makes sense to have the water in the pool to act as a balance for, for the walls, to protect the walls. So how long has the pool been emptied? How long's that valve been leaking?
The answer to that is a couple of years, I believe.
Okay. You also said that, I think you, I'm sorry if, if I'm incorrect, but it was said tonight that we could not make these improvements last summer, that we couldn't start this process because there was no reserve in the capital improvement fund. Okay, I respect that. But is there a budget for the pool in this budget, the capital improvement fund, so that the repairs can start or be approved next October?
I'm going to get back to on that.
There's nothing. There's ten thousand dollars allotted for the pool in this year's budget. Ten thousand dollars, which is just a nominal fee. I have another question. Oh, um, is it true that there's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar capital improvement budget, budgeted for a new roof in this budget?
Two-hundred thousand dollars for roof repairs for the municipal building and a police department.
For, for this building?
Correct.
And, oh, sorry. Does that go out to bid?
It'll either go out to bid or if there are vendors available on state or competitive co-op contract, we wouldn't have to go out to bid, so, to be determined.
All right. Is, is this building leaking as much as the pool?
It is leaking. It is a place of business, eight thirty to four thirty Monday through Friday. And yeah, there are problems with the roof, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Nellin, thirty, Plainfield Avenue, Gary Newton. I hear that you're saying we don't want to put Band-Aids on the pool, but as a homeowner, I put a Band-Aid on my pool every year. It's maintained year-round. So I think that's, you know, sixty-year-old pool needs Band-Aids. I don't have a problem with that. Thank you.
Okay, we've let, we've let several people go. Generally only once, but we let Tracy speak twice, so. Oh, you've already, yes, you've already spoke once during this public portion. Sorry. Okay, anybody else?
Hi, Mady Allison, seventeen, Monroe Ave, Newton.
Hi.
I just want to say, like, closing the pool is going to hurt our kids so much. I was shocked to find out, because we're a walking district, that our overweight percentage in our kids is one of the highest in the state. Couple of years ago, we had a grant because of this. Closing the pool and having these kids stay where there's air conditioning inside, they're not going to go outside in a hundred-degree weather. Have you been to a park when it's a hundred-degree weather? You get burnt. You can't do any other, any other things. It's too hot. So by closing the pool, you just took all outside recreation. When I grew up in the eighties here, nine to twelve, we had the pavilion down at Memory Park. They did arts and crafts with us. They did sports with the boys. At twelve o'clock, we all went up to the pool. I don't know how they had the money back then to do that. We barely have any activities for the kids nowadays. There's nothing going around. And you're saying that you gave a certain amount of money, I don't even remember what you said, to do bus trip here, bus trip, or to do certain activities with the kids? But that's not an everyday thing. These kids are going, first of all, you're going to have kids at home with our older sibling watching them all day long. They're going to be on video games, watching TV, and our rate of overweight is going to skyrocket. And it's just, once a pool closes, it's already been said, they don't reopen. I, we own four properties. We always look for more investment properties. When we go into our house after it's been foreclosed, there might be a little bit of damage. We go back three months later and look and you're like, what happened to this house in that three months that it was sitting empty? It's amazing what happens in such a short period of time when something is sitting empty. That pool is going to be destroyed if it does not get reopened. And you keep saying, this problem was reported two years ago. But again, the same person who told me they didn't care because they did not live in Newton did not do her job, and this could have been started two years ago. But instead, it was waited. You guys wasted money on putting the pavilion up, doing small repairs to, not the actual pool, to make it look better. You should have been working on the pool. Because yes, I want, I, I don't want my kids swimming if it's unsafe. Don't get me wrong, safety is number one. But you need to concern yourself with, it's not safe for these kids to sit at home. It's not good for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else coming forward, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting and on to council and manager comments. So there was something that Ms. Castella said about an audit. The town is audited every year and there's a copy available for you in the municipal building. You can over request it or just go down to the clerk's office.
Who does the audit?
An auditor. The parking issue, we are looking into that, Ralph, as far as, you know, we, we noticed the, the increased demand for on-street parking and the subsequent spillback from it. So there, there's some parcels being looked at. Tom, I would just, I know we discussed earlier today about the timing of, of the, of the study for the pool, but I really want to expedite that because I want to get to the point where, you know, we know, we know what we're doing before, you know, at the end of the summer, we know which direction we're going with the pool. So I'd like to have that discussion in, in June if possible.
I don't think it'll be that fast. They just started the work and we haven't hired a geotechnical firm, but I will communicate to the engineer that we're looking to make sure this is done in a timely fashion. I did that prior to the award of the resolution contract, but I will reiterate that.
And then the other thing is if we could investigate the leak that is stopping the pool from being filled, if that is something that the DPW can fix so that it can be filled back up. And then, you know, I don't know what the maintenance plans are for the DPW for the summer, but if we could maintain and clean the pool as if it is operated.
Yeah, Brock and Michelle.
Not let the concrete get stained. So, I mean, those are, those are the important issues for me right off the bat after hearing a lot of the discussion tonight. So, anybody else?
I just want to comment about the draining of the pool because that was something I specifically looked for and asked about at, specifically Hackettstown, because they have the closest in age and type pool that we have. Anytime there's a damage to the plaster and wherever the fissure goes, if that's on the bottom of the pool, they have to drain the entire pool to fix, so the plaster can cure properly. So unfortunately, it's sort of like that double-edged sword. If, if there's plaster coming out from the bottom, or even if it's on the sidewall in the fissure or the crack runs to the floor of the pool, they still have to drain it entirely to make sure the plaster can cure because the plaster is water-salable until it's, you know, until it's cured. So unfortunately, it seems like, you know, like you said, it's double-edged. We got to fix it, but then when we drain it, sometimes something else is going to be damaged because we have drained it. But if we don't drain it, we can't fix the plaster. So it's sort of like, and that, that's what we're talking about. We want to look into this and see, like, is this going to be recurring hamster wheel of, you know, fix the plaster, drain it, damage the hydrostatic valve? Or is there something more that needs to be done so we can fix it and fix it, you know, not permanently, obviously, because everything has a shelf life, but, you know, can we fix it and have it last twenty, thirty years before we have to do anything major again? So that's what we're talking about. So, that's where we're coming from on this. And regarding the roof on the municipal building, it's coming up to the, the end of its usable life in the next two years, and no major maintenance has, has been done on it in its lifetime. Coming from a construction background, I know that this is, you know, market for a roof of this size and type of a torch-down, and, you know, it's just something we have to do. Unfortunately, like he said, we can't run into an issue where we're not going to fix the roof, and we have a mold issue in, in Town Hall, which a lot of you may know, Votec's pool, the huge price tag on that was mold remediation. That's massively expensive, so we're trying to stay ahead of those things.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of council and manager comments, there's no executive session. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Councilman Medeleyo, second by Councilman Dixon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can take that with you.